Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to call to order our regular school committee meeting for tonight, June 7th, 2023. First order of business is to approve the agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any changes? Before we approve the agenda, we're going to pledge allegiance to the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A true republic, a righteous stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So are there any changes to the agenda? Then the first order of business on the agenda is Citizen Speak. Is there anyone here for Citizen Speak? Doesn't appear to be, so, okay. So then we can move right on to the superintendent's report. Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. First item here is the Tucker Elementary interim principal position. Happy to welcome and congratulate Dr. Carter. Dr. William Carter has 20 years of teaching experience, administrative experience in public and private charter schools. He's an experienced educator who's taught in the Boston and Medford Public Schools as a math teacher, teacher leader, and department head. His administrative experience includes service as a dean of students, director of student support, and principal. He holds a doctoral degree from Boston University, a master of education degree from San Luis State College, and a bachelor of science from Northeastern University. He's a licensed educator and administrator from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education, elementary and secondary education. I want to first, well, second, congratulate, as expressed sincere thanks, to Kat DeRoche, who demonstrated strong leadership this year. She'll be returning to her role as the Director of K-8 Literacy and will skillfully assist with this important leadership transition. I also want to thank the screening committee led by Karen McDavid that included Mary Beth Callahan, Justine Novak, Jen Van Hill, Sarah Myrie, Bernie Wilkinson, Eileen Keeney, Xena Hamana, and Claire Galloway Jones. So please join me in welcoming Dr. Carter, who's here to meet the committee, to the Tucker community, and go Tigers.
Welcome, Dr. Carter. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
I appreciate it. I have to be here.
Did you want to begin and just share a little bit about your background and what drew you to the Tucker community?
Absolutely. Well, I'm excited to be here. This is an incredible opportunity. I've been in education 22 years. This is my 22nd year in education. I feel strongly about the pursuit of excellence in education, and I think that's an important thing that I would like everyone to know. I'm really committed to ensuring that all students have the opportunity to achieve their highest outcomes regardless of their race or ethnicity or socioeconomic status. It's something that is my why. It's something that I'm very passionate about. I earned my doctorate in May 2022, and it was really an incredible experience for me. It took time. I was working full-time, so it took 11 years, 11-plus years, to earn my doctorate. It was definitely a marathon, and, you know, I had some really interesting experiences. People would always ask me, you know, "What are you going to do when you receive your doctorate?" And I'd say, "Please don't ask me that question. I just want to finish." But when I did finish, it was really profound for me that it didn't feel just like a chapter closed, but a book closed. It's kind of like, what am I going to do now? And so when I left my school as a principal up in Salem, I really was really trying to figure out how can I align with my doctoral research and really try to find ways of building, maximizing my impact on education. And my research was really focused on how do you create school spaces where students of African descent, specifically males, will achieve high outcomes? So what does that look like? How do we create the space? And for me, I think that coming to the Tucker really just seems to be an incredibly wonderful fit, to be honest. I'm excited about it. I'm excited to be in a space where there's a rich, diverse community that I can really lean into and learn and help to improve, and I think that's something that is really important to me. And to ensure that all students, regardless of who they are, achieve high outcomes. And there's no disproportionate, there aren't disproportionate outcomes. In other words, that depending on what group you belong to, you achieve high outcome. There's no stratification of outcomes. And so that's just, I think, knowing, as being introduced to Milton Public Schools, that's kind of my heart. That's what I care about most, is really ensuring that everyone has an opportunity to achieve the highest outcomes. As far as I'm concerned, it's all about the kids, and everything that we're doing as adults is to make sure that they shine and they get what they need so they can be and live the lives that they're supposed to live. And I'm just passionate about creating that space and supporting them in that process. And so making sure that they're high academic and behavioral standards, but that we're supporting them in the process to be able to reach those standards. I think that's really important. And so I definitely am a supportive, caring leader, both for the students but also for the faculty that I serve, and just making sure that everyone, it's important that the faculty feel like they're in a position where they're at their best so that the students can be at their best. So ultimately, I really, I seek to create a dynamic space where everyone's kind of learning and growing together, and ultimately where the students are achieving their highest outcomes.
Very excited to have you here. Really eager to get to know you and welcome you to the Tucker community. I know that, as we were just saying, you know, our kids are very excited to meet you.
Excited to meet them as well.
We are happy that you're here. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Questions for Dr. Carter?
No, just thank you for joining us tonight.
Appreciate it. It's my pleasure. Exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. He and I and Kat DeRoche are working on a time next week where they could spend time at the school, get a chance to meet the parents, the teachers, the community, spend a day there. So while he has a full agenda on the busy calendar, we're trying to coordinate calendars and get him over there. So thanks again for coming tonight. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next piece on the agenda here, we have Principal Karen Cahill from Milton High School, who's going to give us a brief update on the NEAS report, which returned to the district, and reporting out some preliminary information, which will be followed up by a larger presentation in the fall. Principal Cahill.
Thanks for having me. As Dr. McKinney said, I have initial findings for our NEAS report. So just a brief summary, we had the NEAS decennial visit back in December. They rescheduled it from October due to lack of staffing on their behalf. So we had it first or second week of December, and we just recently got their draft report. The initial findings of the draft report is that we meet the standards for all of the areas that are required, which are learning culture, student learning, professional practice, learning support, and learning resources. Those are the five areas of what they were looking for when they were doing the collaborative visit, I'm sorry, decennial visit. And so we meet the standard. That's what you look for. They go into the classrooms, they meet with the teachers, they look at our curriculum documents, and they're saying that we meet the standard for accreditation for these areas, which I'm very proud of. It is a reflection of the work that our staff does, the district does, to support teaching and learning of our students. Along with this, there are four priority areas that they also looked at. So three years ago, first year, in 2020, my first year as interim principal, we had a collaborative visit, which is the meeting leading up to the decennial. So it's three years to say, okay, what are we focusing on? What are we going to look at over the next three years? What are we going to find three years from now? So the priority areas that we focused on, and I don't have the words explicitly memorized, I'm just going to go over everything. Priority area one was developing a shared commitment to student-centered learning, collaborative planning, and professional learning. So that was priority area one. Priority area two was really honing down on our multi-tiered systems of support for our students. What do we do at tier one, tier two, and tier three to support our student learning? And that is something that we have also continued to develop over the years. We also, priority area three was facilities, and we've had that conversation for a while now here in the district. And what has the high school done to make sure student learning is happening within our classrooms and our shared spaces? And then priority area four was making sure our school improvement plan is reflective of the needs of our building academically and facilities. So that was three years ago, and in the course of three years leading up to our decennial visit, we have worked on our strengths, found our weaknesses, addressed those weaknesses with NEAS, and the result of the report was we've met the standards for their areas. They then provide us some accommodations and recommendations, and I'm just going to read a few of them right now because what's happening next is the commission is going to meet at the end of this month, and they're going to finalize the report. This is still a draft. So when the final report is ready, as Dr. McKinney said, I will bring that back and I will go over all of the findings with you. But I was just happy to share all of this with you because I've been waiting for this since December, and I kept emailing like, "What's going on? Someone send me something?" So it was very exciting to share this. But just some of the initial recommendations and commendations that I want to share with the group. Some of the recommendations were developing a professional development plan targeting high school priority areas, which I've been working with Dr. McKinney and Central Office on. Develop and implement a common format for curriculum documents across all subjects, which is another area that we're focusing on. Again, Dr. McKinney and I have already spoken about, that's one of our priority areas for the high school next year for PD. We have that curriculum. We have those documents. We're just going to streamline the process, which is great. And then some of our accommodations were, they appreciated the fact that we were getting creative when it comes to our space concern. They appreciated the practice of granting senior, I called it senior privilege, we actually changed the name this year to senior seminar, for those students who have met those graduation requirements, are in good standing, and to help alleviate some of the class sizes that we have due to just all of the great offerings that we have. They commended us for the creative use of limited school space to support our program of studies. I know you've all walked through the building and just some of the spaces, our shared spaces, closets that have been turned into offices, testing areas. So they commended us for that. They commended us for the wide variety of classes offered, and they actually noted when during the NEAS visit, we were actually having the conversation about more AP classes for this coming year. And so we are doing AP pre-calc and offering AP African-American studies, which are two new courses. We're up to 24 AP courses for next year, which I take a lot of pride in that, to really increase the rigor that we have. And we're also increasing our dual enrollment, which they acknowledged with us as well. So they acknowledge all of that work. They really appreciated the common planning period that has been built into the schedule and the fact that next year we're able to do common planning period for all of our disciplines. Initially, it was just English, math, science, and world language and social studies. Now, next year's schedule right now has common planning for all of our classes, for all of our departments, which is our seven departments, which, when you do the master schedule with 1,100 pieces to it, is not an easy feat. So I'm very proud of that as well. And then they just said it again, the creative problem solving related to issues of space and facility usage. So they noted that a few times, so I'm going to say it a few times. But they just really appreciated the effort that we've put into making Milton High School the school that it is, and I truly, I said it, I had a full staff meeting today and gave them the update as well and said, "We couldn't do this without the staff that we have, the support of Central Office, the support of school committee, and the support of the community." It really is a joint effort, so I want to recognize that and thank you all for your support in this as well. Using this information, I will look at my school improvement plan, and this will be work of the site council for next year as we get the formal report back. It will be something that we're reflecting on, adding to, adjusting as needed as we move forward. So these are just the initial findings, and like I said, I look forward to presenting the official report to you when I get that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Principal Cahill.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a reflection of the district, and I'm very proud of that. So thank you all very much for your support.
So again, once the final report comes in, we'll welcome Principal Cahill back for another larger in-depth presentation and see you then.
I'll be there.
Next, under the superintendent's report is an update on Power School. So included in your packet is an overview of the pieces that we're now referring it to the Power School suite because it's three components. And before talking about those, just answering the why. So why switch systems? One, the system that we have in place is over 20 years old, and two, it's not compatible with a lot of the other systems we have, from assessments, SATs, AP exams, and data, and external data. So now, after a district evaluation team spent time reviewing all those, it was recommended that we go to a Power School suite, which is these three components. One, which is the student information system. That's where we keep all the student information, gradebook, attendance, all the things that we have to report out on back to the state. That is where we keep all the student information. Schoology, which is a more robust learning management system, and it connects to our curriculum material. So for example, the new math curriculum we purchased, it talks and has all those assessments in it. We can give those to kids online. New social studies curriculum, we can deliver those to kids online. It's basically a one-stop shop for all those things. It's a little more, I'd say, intuitive in its layout in terms of difference between Google Classroom, it has more capacity. And then the last one is Performance Matters, which is VIVU, Director of Data and Analytics, favorite area. It's a place where we can not only have a data warehouse and store all our data, but we can also create our own internal assessments and have those delivered to kids and keep all the data there. So over the course of this year, just about every Wednesday, our transition team, the Director Bob Patterson, VIVU, A.J. Malanson, and Brad Spindel have been spending three to four hours every Wednesday working with this Power School team to get ready to transition. We'll be announcing more information over the summer. We've also added layers of support for our teachers. We've hired, we're calling the Power School Teacher Leaders at a number of the buildings that can be there. They've been trained up, and they'll deliver training and support. They'll also host office hours for teachers, not only in the morning and the afternoon, but then also like lunch chats for them to be available. And then when we get closer to, obviously, the grading periods, the big times where a report card and the stress comes out, they'll deliver some sort of on-the-spot PD to help people and our teachers learn the new system. So that's kind of a big overview of a larger piece that we've been working on, but we're coming to the home stretch, and we'll be giving some PD for teachers over the summer. That would be optional. It's a four-hour PD module that they will do, and if they do it over the summer, they get that time to prep their classrooms. But if they don't have the time to do it over the summer, we'll schedule time when they come back to school. So that's kind of a lot of information, but that's a short overview. We'll also be giving some supports in terms of parents and students, in terms of things looking differently in the parent portal, and how do you look at your grades and those sort of things. But it's an opportunity for us to be consistent, have the same platform across the district, as well as be strategic in terms of how we teach it as well, collect data and analyze it on a regular basis.
Does it have the ability to, can you port the historical data out of Reddicker into this?
So we're going to keep Reddicker in the background for another year until we stand up Power School. So the information that wasn't Reddicker will be still there archived, if you will, but then we'll bring it all over into Power School. Is that what you're asking?
That's exactly it. Because essentially, it's giving teachers the ability to look historically at student performance.
Yes.
See, has this been something that's been happening before? If something's not going as planned?
And then the second question I have is around security. What assurances have Powers, has Power School made about how well they can secure this data source so we aren't hopefully in any of the jeopardy that other school districts have had when their data systems have been hijacked?
So that's definitely out of my comfort area, but I will get the information, get it back to you. They're the dominant, I would say, source right now in SIS across many districts, but I can certainly have Bob Patterson send me something and pass it along. The one other thing that you mentioned in terms of tracking data, and as a, you know, former reading specialist and interventionist, there's an intervention tracker. So if you were a student support team, say, meeting in fifth grade, you would be able to see the interventions that a kid received over time, whether they were effective or not, see past data history and make real-time decisions based on that and not have to look through, you know, QUM folders or former portfolios. It would all be there in real time. So working with Kat and Brian in terms of those math and literacy supports, you can also do them around behavior and so many other things. So it's a pretty cool platform.
Thank you. So I know that over the summer, we'll be talking about kind of what we're aiming to do next year in terms of community forums, but you did mention sharing information with parents and families. As you were just explaining about the intervention tracker, it was, you know, obviously, there will be a lot of connections with the personalized learning initiative. So I think it would be really great if we could have some way of, you know, providing, whether it's information sessions or whatever it might be where students, I mean, sorry, parents and guardians can come, learn about this in a way that helps connect those dots with the, you know, how this set of resources now supports teachers in doing the personalized learning piece that we've talked up until now. We've really talked about that through a curriculum lens. So I feel like this is a great layer to add on to that. I know that I've heard the term like data dashboard loosely used. So Performance Matters is the data, that's the data dashboard, basically? Is that right? Or is it something different?
Think of it as a data, well, action and warehouse. It can store historical data over time. So all our MCAS stores, reading scores, all that can be stored there. But it can also pull stuff from like Lexia or iReady, or we could create our own, say, semester one exam and deliver it to all freshmen and have that there as well. It can keep track of like our strategic metrics. You can call it a baseball card. You can almost make a little version of that. But VIVU has also created a separate website that has all that there as well. So it can report out on information to the user, but not, I don't think of public facing if that's what you're referencing.
So the district has to kind of, that's still to be determined?
Yes.
Like how Milton Public Schools will be using this for, okay. Any other questions?
I think, remember, Chu asked this kind of last time when we first brought this up, but you're not planning on using Power School kind of as the primary communication, right? There are communication add-ons to this in terms of sending out emails or things, text messages. That will still be kind of mostly handled by the school as relates to like the email listservs and the smore.
So in Power School, the teachers can email home through that, like just like now they do through Reddicker. We also have another platform we use, Blackboard Connect, where you can send messages out that way through email, phone, or text.
Okay. So they will be able, parents might be getting communications through the platform?
Yes, correct.
And then, as you said, the parent portal, right? And student portals where they can actually log in?
Yes.
To see, I don't know if that's something that's available at Reddicker right now for older students, but that's, is that like a new, you know, opportunity for them to stay on top of seeing student grades and attendance, things like that?
The practice, yes. The practice at the secondary level is you can see your grades in real time, live grades. We don't provide that currently at the elementary. But kids can log in and see their grades at the secondary, and parents can get notifications. One of the other modules that's in here is an attendance tracker that front offices are invested using, particularly here at the high school, seeing how many kids on a regular basis are either tardy, absent, being dismissed early, missing out on class time. All those can be, again, in that kind of a dashboard view and keep track in real time so that we can send letters home, we can do parent contact, issue, you know, 10, 15-day letters, those sort of things.
Just want to name, this is an immense amount of work to move to this type of system.
A lot of people usually don't like doing this.
Yeah. It is a huge change management project to move that many teachers into grading, into attendance tracking, you know, from the IT side and data side, setting up everything, report card templates, and importing students, and all the historical records. I mean, immense amount of data. So hats off to the team that's taking this on and the teachers who have volunteered to help their colleagues within their school. That'll be, I think that's a great idea, really help the rollout.
Awesome. It's been a big lift. Welcome. With that, is it okay to move to the next piece there? Preliminary, preliminary field trip approval. So Dr. Fish received a field trip request for seventh-grade French immersion students to attend a trip in Quebec City in May of 2024. Sharing this with you, it doesn't require a vote at this time. This is a preliminary request that meets the field trip policy, IJOA. So in this request, you'll see a statement of the objectives, a description of the safety of the students and how they'll be maintained, including a 10-to-1 chaperone ratio. One chaperone will be a nurse. A proposed budget to costs of students and finances. It'll be about $900 per student. The students will do some fundraising. You can see two there yanking candle in the Midland fundraiser, which is a cookie dough fundraiser to offset some of the costs. The PTOs will sponsor scholarships for students as needed. It's estimated there'll be 100 students attending, as well as at least 10 chaperones. And the plan and schedule is...
Couple lights to come.
Is to leave Pierce on May 9th and return on May 12th around 9:00 PM. And unfortunately, the kids will miss two days of school. And there's a procedure for students if they're separated from the group while they're on the trip, and how nursing services will be provided. So again, this is preliminary approval, as stated in the policy. Final approval must be submitted at least 90 days prior to the trip. So at this time, this request meets all the requirements, and then later at the final approval, if it meets everything, then the committee will take a vote.
Do we know how many, there's 100 students. Do we know how many kids are currently kind of in seventh-grade French this year?
It's a numbers question. We can find that out.
Seventh-grade French is probably about, I would say, 40%. I came from a French immersion background, so you're probably looking at about 125 students or something like that.
Yeah.
So I think they're projecting that we'll be going.
Thanks for pulling that up.
Is this the first time that we have featured in this manner?
No. We've had these, in fact, I think we've had the Quebec one before, it was several years back. But we've had field trips like this in the past also. On some of the vacation periods, we've had field trips to Europe. So that we, the policy is specific for the longer field trips as opposed to, you know, going down to Plymouth Plantation or something like that.
Like overnight trips?
Yeah, these are, you know, more significant trips with more significant cost and, you know, more implications for safety and accessibility to the students and so forth. So they require a larger process.
And is it the same format that teachers are chaperoning, similar to the DC trip? Or are their parents too?
I believe they're all school personnel who are chaperoning. That has been the practice.
Yeah, now, in terms of the fundraising, you know, I see here that students will be participating in a number of fundraisers. Is that to offset the 900 per student cost?
Yes.
And I take it that the PTO would have sort of the whereabouts to be able to support any student that wants to go but may not be able to afford? Because, I mean, the fundraising itself then assumes that the young person can tap into a network?
Right.
And fundraise, but what about if that's not the case?
Right.
So the PTO would work hard to make sure...
I think in the past, the principal has coordinated that with the PTO by sort of identifying students, you know, we don't let the PTO get into too much, but some identifying a number of, how many students would need scholarship, and then seeing if they get it, you know, see if the PTO raised it, but the principal basically controlled how it gets distributed.
That's great.
So does the student have to fill an application form for this, or is it automatically enrolled? Because as we say, we have roughly 125 seventh-grader who are taking French right now, but we can only take up to 100 students. So how are we going to choose the student who will be on the trip?
I think the 100 is an estimate of how many people would be willing to go. You know, there are a fair number of students who don't take advantage of these for one reason or another. Their parents might not feel comfortable with them doing it. There's all sorts of reasons why they may or may not do it. I don't think the intent is to limit it to 100. It's just the expected attendance is probably in the neighborhood of 100. It's just the expected attendance is probably in the neighborhood of 100.
So if it's over 100, if there's a 120 student wanting to go, then you assume that we will have more chaperones going?
Oh, yes. Have to have more. The 10 to one is, is important, student to chaperone.
Just from my general knowledge, is the 10 to one kind of a standard for any out of town field trip or out of country field trip or?
I don't know where it necessarily comes from, but it's what we've been using for a long time.
Okay.
In terms of student, student chaperone. I don't know if for insurance purposes is required or things like that. Sometimes the travel company requires a certain ratio to be covered through their insurance and so forth. I'm not sure the exact origin of it, but I do know it's been fairly constant for a long time.
This doesn't indicate whether this trip is using a company?
I'm going to assume it is. I'd have to go back, we'd have to check and look. Most of these, most of these trips are just for the logistics of.
Yeah.
Getting the accommodations for the kids, arranging for the things that they're going to do while they're there and so forth. It's, to plan a, 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 um, out of country bus trip for 100 middle schoolers, uh, is not something I would take out on my own.
And so some of those additional details will probably be shared with us next year when we vote, are voting to approve this.
Generally, at the second meeting, the principal or the people who are organizing the trip will be here to ask questions in more specific detail.
Any other questions at this point? Thanks.
Next piece on your agenda is hiring updates. I provided the committee members with a handout today with a hiring update up to today, just to quickly review the new administrative hires. First and foremost, we're happy to have Dr. Pavlichek staying with us for another year. So that was great news. We've hired assistant director pupil personnel, director pupil personnel. Michael Bearworth, our new AD here at the high school, came by today, introduced himself to the faculty, filled out paperwork. Caroline Morton was appointed as the Tucker AP. And Dr. William Carter, who's still here with us, was appointed as Tucker interim principal. We have two administrative positions under review that were either under review or interviewing, director of fine arts and the Pierce Middle School assistant principal position. Looking at our postings as an overview, we have 14 positions posted. They're usually posted for 10 days and then we go into kind of a review phase where we go through reviewing applications with the screening committee and so forth. And then there are 15 positions that are in that review phase that we're looking to hire. So we're in nice shape going into the summer, but it's also a fluid time where some people may take leave or accept other positions. So these numbers can kind of move around. And then at the end of the memo here, we'll schedule a strategic metrics presentation in the fall, and that'll provide more information on teacher diversity, hiring retention and new hires, and also our kind of summative performance assessment data once we get MCAS and other state report scores back from the state. So that's the hiring update for today.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I don't recall, but did we get the spring form of assessment data? I mean, I, I may have missed the meeting, but I figured I'd ask.
No.
No, the students are taking it through this week, so.
You mean the MCAS, the summative? Or you mean like the third, the third version of the iReady and Lexia?
That's, yes, we're still closing the window on that. Yes. So we'll have that later. Maybe by next week, we'd have a sneak preview.
Okay, thank you.
I'll buy Director VIVU a coffee and see if I can twist her arm.
Thanks.
And that's all for tonight. Don't have any other district updates through the last few days of school. It's a busy time, as you can see, but looking forward to wrapping up the school year and going into the summer on a high note, so.
Great.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see, so under chairs report, we have just one item, which is the continued discussion of our plans for the summer. So we have a draft here that we wanted to just look at and get any, get your input. I want to thank Dr. Miranda for taking time with me and Dr. Burrows to put this draft together. This was sort of our best initial thinking about how to make use of the time that we've already set aside for this sort of mini retreat over two weeks. And really looking forward to this as our opportunity to kind of launch our work as a team with Dr. Burrows. So I, I guess we'll just open it up for questions, observations, or any input that any of you might have.
Thanks for putting this together because I think it reflects all the things that we spoke about during our last meeting. I came across some research on this idea of a operating protocol. It's like, I'm going to use a business analogy because many of you know business by training. But operating agreements usually help dictate the nature of a relationship. And operating protocols, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has come up with these, it's almost like guiding principles for how a school committee should work together. And since, you know, we've had people on the school committee that worked together, together for six years, and I think the longest tenure we have are Lizzie and myself for two. I think it would be interesting for us to read the article as a group and talk about whether or not we think it's something appropriate for here. It's not very long, but I do think it'll be more than 30 minutes, I should say at least. So maybe it's something that's, reading the agenda here, it probably makes sense for that part one. But probably towards the end.
So as I hear you speak, I'm wondering if it could go actually in tandem with the Rising to the Occasion, chapter nine? Because it's really, that chapter in particular, I think, gets to some of that in terms of our operating agreements and how we want to do our work together as a team. So I, I think that's where it would fit nicely. Would you agree?
Yeah, that sounds great. So would that be, is it like a link to an article? Something that you could easily share with us?
Yeah. It's off the MASC website. It's nothing, it's beaten by books.
Okay. Thank you for looking into that and raising it. That sounds.
Good to me, like something we could add?
Yep. So you'll see this idea of the, the way to kind of jigsaw the book. So I think Dr. Burrows' sort of vision for, for that was, we all have by now our copies of the book. You know, we each have our own way of reading books, getting through books. I think if we know ahead of time, sort of which couple of chapters we are each going to be focusing on, and if we split this up in pairs, then that might sort of help us kind of focus on, you know, how we're bringing our reflections into the discussions. I think, I'm interested in what you all feel would be a good way of assigning those chapters and those pairs. The way I'm thinking about this and the purpose of a jigsaw, of course, is like, you know, we would come during that chunk of time where we're looking at each chapter, like the people who are presenting on the couple of chapters are really like highlighting the most salient points. And so that means that if you're, you know, able to skim the entire book, but really closely read the two chapters that you're going to present, then that's a way that we can also make sure we're kind of getting the most information that we possibly can, but in like an efficient way that fits into our lives. I'm wondering if we could, like, what do you all think makes sense to assign those chapters to people? One idea is I could just put a Google Doc together where we can sign up for the chapters that we want. Not assuming that anybody knows right now, like which chapters we prefer to read based on the table of contents. What makes sense?
Is there any criteria for how the information is to be presented at the retreat? Like, is there a presentation? Like, is it more informal? Like, were there any guidelines from Peter, I mean, Dr. Burrows?
I think there was more sort of free flow and the idea, I think, which I appreciated of Dr. Burrows thinking about, that it would also give us a chance to talk to one another before the, that presentation, to just say, you know, if you and I are reading the same chapters, then we would sort of check in with one another, maybe 30, you know, for 30 minutes at some point before that day, to just say, well, this is what I found the most interesting. I, I found this, so I'm going to bring this point. And just sort of coordinate with one another and then bring sort of our, our, you know, just the highlights that we want to sort of raise at the, at the meeting that day. So much more, you know, loosely structured, not, not rigid in any way.
But we can also put together like simple prompts as far as, you know, kind of what were, what questions did this raise for you? Like, what were the most important takeaways that we should definitely all, you know, think about together? We, I mean, that would be easy enough to kind of offer like a little bit of a framework and you could use it if it was helpful or not use it if it wasn't. I can put that together. Is everybody okay with that kind of signup method, if you like? Okay, so I'll follow up with that. And any other questions or?
I do have one suggestion. It'd be great, like when we do pair up, because I know I've sort of served on committees, like subcommittees with certain members and not others. And it'd be great if we could kind of like mix, like, you know, and kind of, you know, take, like getting to know some of the other committee members. Because one of the things, I know it's tough when we're, you know, we meet at our board meetings, like, but we don't really know each other like on a, like personal level. And sometimes that may be good, you know, to help kind of build that relationship, working relationship that you might usually have with your colleagues, that we don't really have an opportunity to have here. So they might be good, you know? So when we do sign up, maybe that's something to keep in mind, too.
Thanks for that suggestion. And I know that's also part of the goal, that we're having like dinner each time together, you know, opportunity to just connect in that way, like as colleagues. So. That's a good suggestion. Maybe what I'll do, sort of similar to like the whole subcommittee thing, but less intense. Just like take your votes, so to speak, for which app, and then I'll just put, yeah, like with what Anna just mentioned, I'll kind of use that as a final deciding, as making up pairs. Let everybody know. And then we'll still have, you know, like six weeks to, to read and, and prepare to come to that session. So. Great. And if you, you know, if you, things occur to you after tonight, just send me an email. Me and, maybe if you send it to both Dr. Miranda and myself, then we can finalize the planning in the coming weeks. I think we're going to meet with Dr. Burrows in July, once he's here, to kind of do another round of drilling down on the agenda. But he's really looking forward to this time with us, really appreciates us setting aside this amount of time to be together, and I think it's going to be really great. So, thanks. And with that, I'll hand it over to member Loring, Facilities Advisory Committee.
So we had our first Facilities Advisory Committee since the turnover in the board about a week ago, back on the 31st. It was, we started with introductions as I was a new member, member Bargees was a new member, and Chris Hayden, Consolidated Facilities Director, was also new. I think he was in day eight. So there's a lot of, a lot of new folks. Luckily, Dr. Pavlichek kept us in order, as he was not a new member. We got a report from the Consolidated Facilities Director, again, he was in 12 days on the job, but very knowledgeable, gave us updates about some of the capital projects going on across the schools. A couple of things to note, he has kind of a bidirectional antenna, updates across many sites, which is a communication tool for fire department and also police departments. So there were some updates on that, refinishing of the Glover Gym floor, plans for that, additional maintenance work on rooftop units, et cetera. All these things that kind of were going across the district that he is working to manage currently and also plans for over the summer. So got that. Then as the committee, we began chatting about some of the classroom needs updates, which everyone is acutely aware of, how tight we are on space. We talked about kind of current enrollment projections at the start for next year. And the current looking at enrollment for next year was that they're going to be about the same as it is this year, maybe a few students less projected currently for next year, but essentially about the same. So our current space constraints that we have this year don't seem as if they will necessarily get worse next year. They will be about the same, although there might be some slightly different pinch points as kids move up to Pierce, a large grade moving up to Pierce, things like that. So we had conversation about that. We discussed some of the various space issues such as the Cunningham Library issue and just talked through some potential projects for the summer. There is some funding for some projects through the summer. There are currently no firm plans for specific projects related to space for this summer, but those are things Chris Hayden, in addition to Dr. Pavlichek, were going to talk through to see if there are things that, that are feasible and make sense for us to do to address some short-term space needs. We talked kind of more about discussing longer term, or I should say, medium term plans, how we are biding our time between the now and the potential future school opening. And began having some initial conversations on that. It was raised that Dr. Burrows is, this is something he is obviously acutely aware of and interested in, and so potentially bringing him in on the conversation. But this, this seems like it will be a primary direction and focus of the committee as we move forward. And member Bargees and myself were chatting about kind of like in ways, you know, how, how can we just be of most use as a committee to try and address this, which is obviously one of the biggest challenges our, our students are facing, our staff are facing. So that was most of the conversation. We did also get an update on summer school facility needs. And Dr. Pavlichek shared that most of the summer school programming happens here at the high school. There's a lot of work at the other schools, moving things around, getting them ready, cleaned and reorganized for the future year. There is some ESY support and sped needs as well as Camp Cunningham over at, at the Cunningham, but those are really the, the two sites that have them. We did talk about some cooling of those spaces, as we know they're not air conditioned and there don't appear to be some great options, but those were some things we, we talked through. Obviously, those are ongoing annual things that the staff and students manage through and deal with. But otherwise, those were, those were the updates from the meeting. Open up to member Bargees or Dr. Pavlichek in case there's anything I forgot to share the group.
Yeah, that was great.
Are you taking questions? Are you taking questions?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is the plan in the medium term to maintain the classroom space in the Cunningham Library or in the stages? Or do we have a plan to transition those classes into more permanent structures or semi-permanent structures?
Yeah, so there is currently no plan to move them elsewhere. There aren't real clear locations for them. So I think that's one of the things the committee wants to look at, needs to look at of what could we do to move them to more permanent locations? What could we do to keep them in the location they're in, but make that location more permanent and better suited for student learning? And again, what are the costs and the trade-offs of, obviously, you know, can't build in addition? onto certain schools and pay twenty million dollars when then we're going to build a new school, so there are obviously cost restrictions, but the robustness of the plan is not quite there at this point. A lot of the stuff that appears have been created ahead of time and that has gotten us to this point seems to be kind of maxing out the flex spaces that were available and that were kind of identified in previous years, and so I think it's incumbent upon us at the committee to figure out, okay, the next five-year flex spaces in order to build more resiliency within, within our facility model.
Thank you.
Will the library situation at the Cunningham get better with the remediation of the space that was damaged because of the pipes?
That had its final inspection yesterday, so be able to, the class has relocated into the Cunningham Library, be able to, won't be there next fall. You'll still have the spaces on either end that have been there for a while. The sort of half-walled classroom at the Cunningham end and the small space at the Coliseum will still be there, but the center won't be taken up by, you know, fifth-grade class or whatever's up there now, because we do have, I believe, it was yesterday, so I believe we have final clearance to go back in those rooms.
That's not wood.
You're meeting one more time in the next couple of weeks, right?
That's correct, we're meeting next Wednesday before the school.
And so at that meeting, will you be continuing to discuss possibilities for those summer projects, or is that work that you'll be doing with Mr. Hayden?
The larger summer projects are already underway, because most of those are capitalized. The, you know, the Glover Gym and so forth, those are projects that we've been planning and have lined up for the summer, you know, in different pieces. It's the smaller, all right, if we have this many preschoolers and we need to address a preschool room that was a kindergarten room or that was something else, what are the, what do we need to do with those? Those are, those are, you know, more minor modifications, but still, we have to plan out over the summer, and that's really a function of, once the classrooms are all set, the principals tell us which space is being used for what purpose, we can look at it and say, well, what do we need to do here in the short term to make those spaces more accessible to the students who are going to be in them? A lot of that's going to just depend on, you know, as the individual schools, how the principals want to look at best usage of their space.
So Glenn, I just have a point of clarification related to what's capitalized versus what's expensed. When we talk about trailers or renovating existing spaces to reuse them, are those traditionally capitalized?
The trail, we've never done trailer modular classrooms, so they would be, those would be, because they have a sufficient lifespan and they have sufficient costs, so they'd have to be part of the town's capital budget. Modifications, you know, within a classroom to make it more effective for, you know, a different age of children, different needs of children, we, that's not part of the capital budget. The Consolidated Facilities Department does have an amount in the capital budget of just money that they can use for smaller projects, but they also have money in their budget. Truly, it belongs in their budget for the most part, because most of those things are not, you know, sufficient cost to be capital expenses, but the town has sometimes put things into its capital budget that probably, if we had more money in our operating budget, would live there instead of being in the capital budget funded by free cash. I mean, for instance, sometimes we've had Chromebooks in the capital budget, and to my mind, those are not a capital expense. They just don't have the lifespan or, you know, they have the aggregate cost, but, you know, so it, sometimes you get things in the capital budget that are there for convenience and the ability to fund them at the town level. But for the most part, the big projects are capitalized, we know what they are a year more in advance, and the smaller ones are just, as we need, you know, to make the schools open properly.
So in theory, the plan that you all come up with next school year will reflect the projections and therefore be part of the capital plan. Thanks.
Last time we bought modules, we paid one dollar for them, so I don't think they were capitalized at that point.
Can I buy one of those? It's a dollar. Put it in my yard.
There's a reason why they're.
They were disgusting.
But I do want to just add to what Member Loring was saying, it's like we do have volunteers, it's great that so many people have volunteered, and it's like, how can we best utilize their abilities and their backgrounds to kind of come up with solutions for the next five years? That's, Member Loring and I met the other day, to kind of, you know, what would that be and what would that look like, so that we actually have a plan, you know, going for the next five years, whether we have to look at modulators or, you know, however we, we deal with temporary space, we just want to make sure we have all our options out there so we can make good informed decisions, and then also understand from a cost standpoint how much that's going to be, you know? Like, one of the things that we talked about is like, you know, could we, if we had to go the modular route, like, could we go to a district that has used them and is getting rid of them now, for instance, you know, when they built a new school? So like, could we do that? Would that be cheaper? So just like looking at alternatives like that, but because, I mean, I think at some point, we're gonna like, one of the committee members did mention, like, if there is an incident like the flooding at Cunningham, we're screwed, you know? So like, I hate to say, use that word, but I thought it was fitting. Anyway, so it's, you know, so we want to try to make sure that we've kind of maximized our square footage at each of the schools, right? So now what do we do, right? Like, so we just kind of have to think of that next step, because we still are even as many, as much as we divide and slice the pie however we want, we're still running out of space, so. Anyway, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you both so much for, like, hitting the ground running with this Advisory Committee, because it's clear there's a lot to do, and you all, yeah, thanks for an informative report, and, you know, next week, if you have any, like, updates, maybe we can, we'll talk about the next agenda, but we could next week hear if anything else comes out of next week's meeting, so thank you for doing those meetings back-to-back like that. School Building Committee report, I know that met Dr. Miranda or Member Loring.
I can share, I can share the update. So it was the first time the School Building Committee had met in a little while, I think the first one since the land swap approval at town meeting. We had some initial conversations just on next steps related to the land swap parcel, some things that need to be done in order to move that forward and get information for some of the state agencies, too, regarding some of those approvals, such as appraisals of the land, and alternatives analysis, so really that's been done, it's just a matter of, you know, consolidating all the information on all the options that have been looked at over these last four years, and putting that into a coherent document to, again, give to the state agencies, things like that. Again, you know, we talked a bit about the budget that was allocated to the S B C through town meeting, and that funding, obviously, needing to go towards kind of some design services, and so initial conversations about, you know, how to start the process of securing kind of an architect to begin looking at creating some more robust designs for the site, an owner or project manager will need to be obtained for, to oversee the project, but we, again, we talked about kind of when that would happen, and obviously also many other analyses, such as geotech, traffic, stormwater, there are lots of other things that need to happen and be looked at at the site in even more depth before things can move forward. So talked about all that. We also talked about an additional property that came up that was discussed at the Select Board, and obviously there was an article in the Milton Times on that, it's called the Carr Estate. S B C members did a site visit of it, some S B C members did a site visit of it, I believe it was last Friday.
Last Friday.
Time flies. So last Friday, walked the site, people, the individuals who did that came back and shared thoughts on it, and, you know, there are some interesting aspects to it in that, you know, it's a large parcel within Milton, which there aren't that many of, that is for sale, which there aren't that many of those. It potentially has some challenges with topography, it's a very sloped property, it's a little bit narrow location where it is, you know, Blue Hill Ave, very busy, would need sidewalks, so just some very kind of high-level conversations about, you know, the estate, the committee, one of the members of the committee is going to look at kind of taking the designs as we have it within the land swap parcel, and see if it can kind of be readjusted and do just a very initial kind of mock-up of what a project might look like on this site if the School Building Committee or the town were to purchase it. So that's kind of the, the initial conversations. We have another meeting next week, so we'll continue the conversation.
Yeah, and the only other thing I would add to that new option that's been presented is that it comes, it's two parcels, so, and you can't purchase one without the other, so there is sort of that complication to, to the deal. So it's something that we're going to continue to look at, and there's also a historic, historic homes in one of the parcels, so that's another layer of complexity.
Yes.
So if we were to buy the whole parcel, would we have to maintain that as a historic home?
So one of them for sure, it seems like that would be the case, and that it needs quite the amount of work, right? So that would be an added cost.
Okay.
There's two, actually, that are on the.
In a barn?
Yeah, registry, so it's, yeah, just something we need to investigate further.
But if someone were to purchase the house in the barn, then you could potentially buy the other, right?
Yeah, to get into this, so there's the two parcels, they're selling them both together, but then they want to sell that. They're willing to sell the house one, the one with the two historic properties by itself, but not the undeveloped one, which is the one that has the most land by itself. Again, the price point overall is seven million dollars for both, three or four for the house one and three for the lower one, but again, seven million dollars total. Yeah, I mean, you could potentially wait and see if somebody purchased the top and then come in and purchase the lower, somebody might purchase them both together, though. Obviously, land in general is something that everybody thinks the town should have more of, the question is really price point, and seven million dollars is, maybe require a town meeting and a town-wide vote, yeah. So they're all, all those pieces, but again, it's very, just kind of early in terms of whether or not something can fit on the site, like, what are some other issues with the site, like, again, can, could we move buildings? If not, could we fit programming within the six-point-eight acre parcel that's just the lower parcel, not touch the, the houses on the upper? So all things that need to be looked into.
Thanks for that update. That is, that is it for our reports today, so that just brings us to approval of minutes, which would be for May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
I have one edit on page five, it's really, really small. This is the first mention of Member Ross Denny, the second bullet, we now have our guided document, we have our guiding document? That's it.
Guiding?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other edits? Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the Milton School Committee minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous, okay, thank you. Next meeting agenda, so we've mentioned a couple of follow-up reports that we will have facilities and the School Building Committee meeting again prior to Wednesday night?
We may. It hasn't been confirmed.
Okay, so what we'll do is just put it on our agenda, and we can always remove it if, if it doesn't turn out that we need to have a report. Policy?
Yes.
We will have a report.
Finance is meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. Dr. McKinney, do you know of any other items for next week?
Off the top of my head.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about, you mentioned that it may be possible to have the spring assessment update.
He said he was going to get Vee Coffee and ask her, maybe she can.
Yeah, maybe a sneak preview, I think, would be in line for the C I A Committee. I don't know if we'd be ready for prime time for the fourteenth, but I'll know more tomorrow after the coffee.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just stay tuned on that.
Okay.
I don't have my notes from last time, but I seem to recall we had something we identified last time as wanting to be on the fourteenth, I'll have to go back and look. I remember at the end of last, we were talking about next agenda items at our last meeting, we put some today, but there was something that was.
Is it in the minutes?
It's only eight o'clock, we're in trouble. So that's fine, we can follow up on that tomorrow. We'll be posting it Friday, right? Okay, so if other ideas come forward, just send them to me by tomorrow, so that we have an opportunity to include them. But yeah, next Wednesday's meeting will be on Zoom, and that will be our final scheduled meeting for this school year.
The fourteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, there will be no minutes for Finance Committee.
And that's just one week from today, in order to fit our two June meetings in before the end of the school year, since we're ending so early this year. So I guess with that, Dr. Carter, thank you for having hung in this whole time.
It's an hour, you had it easy.
Hopefully, yeah, you have a taste of what's to come, we're a very congenial school committee, very efficient with our, with our work. We have an executive session, though, so now I'm going to make a motion to adjourn into executive session, not to return to open meeting, open session, and this executive session is for the purpose of discussing strategy for negotiations, collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Two. We will adjourn directly from executive session and not return to open session. So I've made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great, that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.